Thank you, Bishop Borders, for gracing us with your presence and your invocation here. We are now on to presentations. We will have two presentations, one from Council Peppen in recognition of Public Works Appreciation Week, and one from Council Murphy in recognition of our EMS workers in EMS Week. Council Peppen, you have the floor in five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. If I can invite over Officer Manny to the podium? So, good afternoon, everyone. It is an honor to stand before you today during National Public Works Appreciation Week, a time dedicated to recognize the incredible work of our Public Works Department. To our Public Works team, thank you. Thank you for showing up day after day, often before the sun rises, often long after others have gone home, to keep our city running smoothly. You are the unsung heroes behind clean streets, safe roads, efficient waste management, and well-maintained public spaces. You work hard. Your hard work ensures that our neighborhoods are not only livable, but thrive. You turn challenges into solutions and bring order to the daily rhythms of our city. Whether it's clearing snow, fixing potholes, maintaining infrastructure, or managing city utilities, your commitment does not go unnoticed. Now, today I have before you all Officer Manny from Code Enforcement Department, which is a branch of Public Works. I've had the opportunity of being out in the field with Officer Manny numerous times now. Whenever my office reaches out to him, or a resident reaches out to him, saying, hey, there's an improper disposal of trash, or, hey, this business needs to make sure that they're keeping their store from clean, or if a sidewalk needs better just conditions, his team is out there every single day. And it's funny because I just got word that I invited a lot more people, but they're actually, they've been sent out today to do the work because we are expecting rainfall tomorrow, and their work is impacted by that. So I just want to commend them because they're always thinking ahead. They're always making sure that they're looking at the small issues in our city that for us, for many of us, may seem like we may not even notice it, but to them it's a big deal. So on behalf of myself and the entire city of Boston, I just wanted to say Happy Public Works Appreciation Week. Officer Manny is a little shy, but his work speaks for him. So I'm just gonna present him with the resolution declaring May 18th as Public Works Appreciation Day in the city of Boston. And if I could call my colleagues for a quick picture, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much to Officer Manny and to Public Works, and to all the work that you do. Thank you. I know that we're happy, but there's no clapping in chambers. And thank you to Council Peppen for recognizing them. That neon vest looks good on you. Next, I'd like to call up Council Murphy, who will be recognizing our EMS workers in honor of EMS Appreciation Week. Council Murphy, you have the floor in five minutes.
Could Chief Houli and our EMS workers please join us? Another tribute to our city workers, the backbone that keep our city moving. It's an honor to represent, present to you today. And Council Fitzgerald, the Chair of Public Health and obviously a strong advocate for all our city workers, has co-sponsored this with me, and also Council Flynn. He is at a event in Chinatown, and should be here any minute. That was scheduled at the same time as the start of this meeting, but he is also on this resolution, which we will suspend and pass later. So thank you, Chief, and everyone for being here. So I am presenting. It is EMS Week, a resolution in recognition of the Boston Emergency Medical Services in celebration of this important week, but start off by saying we appreciate you every day, but it's important the times we can highlight and uplift the hard work that you do. So for a little history, in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized National Emergency Medical Services Week to honor the critical contributions of EMS professionals who safeguard the health and safety of communities across the nation. Boston Emergency Medical Services is one of the city's three core public safety agencies, responding to 911 calls with clinical excellence, professionalism, and compassion, and is recognized as the largest municipal EMS agency in New England. Boston EMS provide both basic life support and advanced life support, ambulance coverage across all Boston neighborhoods, responding to tens of thousands of clinical incidences each month with urgency and care. I have gone on a ride-along, and your commitment and your staff is just amazing, and I know they do such hard work. And what I noticed and what stood out to me is when the fire and police, who obviously also are critical to the safety of our residents, they stay behind and help. And often when they bring them to the hospital, I saw many, you know, afraid to leave their home, or wanting certain belongings to come with them, and just the compassion that the EMS showed those residents was heartwarming. So thank you for always being so kind to our residents who need you in their time of need. So in 2012, so members of the Boston EMS played a vital role in the front lines, even though it's been a few years, I think it's always important to remember that during COVID-19 pandemic, they responded to over 160,000 incidents that year alone in 2021, caring for suspected and confirmed COVID-19 patients, and administering more than 2,300 vaccinations. So this year, every year, there's a different theme for EMS, and this year, the National EMS Week theme is "We Care for Everyone," and it reflects the strength, adaptability, and continued commitment of EMS professionals like those serving in Boston, who was risen to the challenge today and every day. And before I pass it off to my colleague, Council Fitzgerald, to say a few words, I do also want to highlight, we've had recent class graduates, we've expanded or reintroduced, I would say, the cadet program. So it's great to see that we have so many Boston residents who see this as a path of a wonderful job. So whatever we can do on the council to make sure we're supporting your employees, the workers that keep us safe and alive, and thank you. I want to extend my thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Chief, we had you guys in front of us for the budget a while ago, and you spoke about the work that you do, about when you enter a room, and everybody in that room looks at you to help save their loved one, or help solve this situation. It's an emergency, a crisis, and that pressure is on you. You guys have always responded. Here on the council, we pass
Thank you so much to Officer Manny and to Public Works and to all the work that you do. Thank you. I know that we're happy, but there's no clapping in chambers. And thank you to Council Peppin for recognizing them. That neon vest looks good on you. Next, I'd like to call up Counselor Murphy, who will be recognizing our EMS workers in honor of EMS Appreciation Week. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor in five minutes.
Could Chief Houli and our EMS workers please join us? Another tribute to our city workers, the backbone that keep our city moving. It's an honor to represent, present to you today. And Counselor Fitzgerald, the Chair of Public Health and obviously a strong advocate for all our city workers, has co-sponsored this with me and also Counselor Flynn. He is at a event in Chinatown and should be here any minute. That was scheduled at the same time as the start of this meeting, but he is also on this resolution, which we will suspend and pass later. So, thank you, Chief, and everyone for being here. So, I am presenting. It is EMS Week in resolution in recognition of the Boston Emergency Medical Services in celebration of this important week, but start off by saying we appreciate you every day, but it's important the times we can highlight and uplift the hard work that you do. So, for a little history, in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized National Emergency Medical Services Week to honor the critical contributions of EMS professionals who safeguard the health and safety of communities across the nation. Boston Emergency Medical Services is one of the city's three core public safety agencies, responding to 911 calls with clinical excellence, professionalism, and compassion, and is recognized as the largest municipal EMS agency in New England. Boston EMS provide both basic life support and advanced life support, ambulance coverage across all Boston neighborhoods, responding to tens of thousands of clinical incidences each month with urgency and care. I have gone on a ride along, and your commitment and your staff is just amazing, and I know they do such hard work. And what I noticed and what stood out to me is when the fire and police, who obviously also are critical to the safety of our residents, they stay behind and help. And often when they bring them to the hospital, I saw many afraid to leave their home or wanting certain belongings to come with them, and just the compassion that the EMS showed those residents was heartwarming. So, thank you for always being so kind to our residents who need you in their time of need. So, in 2012, so, members of the Boston EMS played a vital role in the front lines. Even though it's been a few years, I think it's always important to remember that during COVID-19 pandemic, they responded to over 160,000 incidents that year alone in 2021, caring for suspected and confirmed COVID-19 patients, and administering more than 2,300 vaccinations. So, this year, every year, there's a different theme for EMS, and this year, the National EMS Week theme is We Care for Everyone. And it reflects the strength, adaptability, and continued commitment of EMS professionals like those serving in Boston, who was risen to the challenge today and every day. And before I pass it off to my colleague, Counselor Fitzgerald, to say a few words, I do also want to highlight, we've had recent class graduates, we've expanded or reintroduced, I would say, the cadet program. So, it's great to see that we have so many Boston residents who see this as a path of a wonderful job. So, whatever we can do on the council to make sure we're supporting your employees, the workers that keep us safe and alive, and thank you. I want to extend my thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Chief, we had you guys in front of us for the budget a while ago, and you spoke about the work that you do, about when you enter a room and everybody in that room looks at you to help save their loved one, or help solve this situation, it's an emergency, a crisis, and that pressure is on you. You guys have always responded. Here on the council, we pass an ordinance, you won't stop hearing about it for a year. You guys go in and save lives every day, and we don't talk about it enough. You guys are really the unsung heroes. And so, we want to do everything we can, and we know that there's more support you need to make sure we have more coverage for all areas of the city, to respond to everyone as fast as you can. So, for the folks up here with us today, thank you so much for taking on that pressure. Pressure is a privilege, and you guys take that privilege to the highest degree, and so we're here to thank you today. So, appreciate it. And Chief, I turn it over to you if you'd like to say any words, sir.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you for offering this. Thanks for everybody being here today. We're most grateful and humbled by this. This body has routinely recognized us, and whether it's formally here, or when we see you in the community, or we see you with constituent issues, or requests for trainings or anything, and there's always been great respect from this body to our organization and the members of our department. I know our union members all appreciate that as well, too. Yes, we are very busy, but we do feel supported, and we do, and we are, and it is, besides even responding to emergencies, we're also trying to help inform efforts to keep people out of the hospital, to improve health, to improve safety, to work with all the other city departments. And there is good spirit of cooperation among all city departments here in Boston, and that's in no small part because of, the council works with all the departments as well, too. So, thank you very much for this, and again, we don't, we never take this for granted all lightly. Thank you. Thank you.
Could our colleagues join us? We get to take the prom photo. He opted to live. Wow, you're a pro.
That's our color, too. Okay, thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you. I got you.
Look at how you are.
Thank you.
Do this one more.
One more. Are you done? Okay.
You're good?
Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to Chief Houli, to Roger, to Tayshon, for all the work that you do on behalf of our city and for just being there when our residents need you most. Thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselors Weber and Counselors Orell are now present and with us? We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the meeting, the approval of the minutes from the meeting of May 14, 2025. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes, the minutes of the May 7th meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our honor of the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1095?
Docket number 1095, message transmitting certain information under Section 17F regarding city of Boston employee demographic data filed on, filed but docket number 1020 passed by the council on May 7, 2025.
Thank you. Docket number 1095 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Tanya Fernand Anderson is now present and with us? We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 1096 through 1098?
Docket number 1096, communication was received from Timothy Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board, regarding follow-up correspondence to the fiscal year 26 retiree cost of living adjustment, also known as COLA base vote. Docket number 1097, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its special meeting of April 30, 2025. And docket number 1098, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of May 7, 2025.
Thank you. Dockets number 1096 to 1098 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0822 to 0845?
Dockets number 0822 through 0824, orders for the fiscal year 26 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department for other post-employment benefits. Dockets number 0825 and 0827, orders for capital fund credit appropriations. Docket numbers 0828 through 0830, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements. And docket numbers 0831 through 0845, orders authorizing limits for departmental revolving funds, including law, tourism, arts and culture, environment, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, schools, and police, and other budget-related dockets.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Brian Orell, the Chair of Ways and Means Committee. Counselor Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means had continuous deep dive into dockets number 0822 through 0830, dockets number 0839 through 0844, and docket number 0845, examining the administration's proposed FY26 budget in detail. To date, we have logged 99 hours, 10 minutes, and 44 seconds across 42 public hearings and working sessions, and we are nearing the home stretch. I want to take a moment to recognize the tireless efforts of my team, central staff, council colleagues, IGR, and all council staff, whose hard work behind the scenes continues to make this process possible. On Thursday, May 15, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing to review the FY26 budget for the Boston Police Department to go over mental health and substance abuse response, community policing, firearms, homicides, crime lab, K-9 revolving fund, fitness center revolving fund. Presented on behalf of the administration were Chief of Police, Commissioner Cox, Chief of Staff, Nicole Taub, Bureau of Administration and Technology, Lisa O'Brien, Superintendent and Chief Owens, Superintendent of Bureau Investigative Services, Cologne, and Deputy Superintendent of Bureau Field Services, Humphries. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Weber, Mejia, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Council President Louis Jen, and the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin. At the hearing, the Boston Police Department highlighted recent progress in reducing crime through community policing, discussed the annual firearms report, which shows a decrease in ghost guns, and detailed the hiring of a new crime lab director, while also explaining that wise screening is being outsourced, and that to bring it in-house would take extra equipment, training, and a validation process. The administration also expanded officer wellness programs and mental health response systems. Other budget topics included legal liability costs, traffic enforcement, and the continued use of ShotSpotter. The $3 million budget increase reflect collective bargaining agreements for civilian workers and the rollout of a new pay detail system. Counselors also raised questions about overtime equity and youth jobs, with BPD clarifying that while it participates in success link, those salaries are not part of its direct budget. The hearing closed with follow-up requests for data on Section 12 usage, mass and cast overtime, and law enforcement trust fund balance. On Thursday, May 15, at 2:00 p.m., the committee held a hearing to review the FY26 budget for the Boston Police Department to review overtime detail system, officer mental health, diversity, and recruiting. Presented on behalf of the administration were Chief of Police, Commissioner Cox, Chief of Staff, Chief Taub, Bureau of Administration and Technology, Lisa O'Brien, Superintendent and Chief Owens, Superintendent of Bureau Investigative Services, Superintendent Cologne, and Deputy Superintendent of the Bureau Field Services, Deputy Superintendent Humphries. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Santana, Braden, Flynn, Murphy, Mejia, Weber, Fitzgerald, Coletta Zapata, Council President Louis Jen, and the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin. We received a letter of absence from Counselor Durkin. The council continues BPD budget review, learning that there are currently 200 sworn officer vacancies and 195 civilian vacancies. Both decreases from last year, when the total number of vacancies were more than 500. The most recent police academy classes are forecast to be 170, despite the council funding for 200 new officers per year, as it has for multiple years. There are currently 1,430 patrol officers, and the administration spoke about changes to the state civil service pathway that might allow for hybrid entry to the police department, where some people test in and some enter through another route. We got a breakdown of diversity among higher-ups at BPD. Among the 23 captains, there are two black male captains, making up 99% of captains. Among the 77 lieutenants and lieutenant detective, there are only nine BIPOC lieutenants, making up 12%, and among the 279 sergeants, there are only 62 BIPOC sergeants, or 22%. Among the commissioners, 22 command staff, there are 15 BIPOC staff, a much higher percentage of 68%. Among patrol officers is 45%. These numbers were followed by a discussion of the police promotional exam, and how BPD delaying it even a few months in FY25 allowed for more diversity in the higher ranks. BPD remained adamant that they would not follow suit with other departments across the country that rely on more than an exam to promote officers. The hearing also addressed the delayed rollout of the civilian flagger pilot program. While the contract to manage the program has been awarded, it has not been finalized. Counselors raised concerns about equitable procurement, noting the limited pool of applicants and the lack of MWBE participation. The administration explained that the detailed management contract had been awarded to extra duty solutions through a standard procurement process, with implementation underway and expected to be completed by fall 2025. Discussions included how to ensure that future hiring under the civilian flagger program prioritizes Boston residents and reflects the city's diversity. Counselors also pushed for transparency regarding demographic reporting and oversight for both the flagger contract and the new detail system. In regards to mass and cast, the administration testified that there still has been no arrests made on the encampment ordinance, and there have been about 20, 25 to 30 possession arrests per week on mass and cast. The use of mass and cast coding for special events overtime was described as a byproduct of having three different precincts contributing staff to the area. Counselors echoed concerns raised in public testimony questioning overtime management, youth job distribution, and data sharing transparency. Updates were requested on BPD's current surveillance practices, use of AI technology, and coordination with the office police accountability and transparency. The administration reported that BPD does not use AI in investigations, and that footage from surveillance systems is deleted based on legally mandated retention schedules. On Friday, May 16, at 10:00 a.m., the committee held a working session to preview the remaining departmental hearings and remind counselors that budget amendment forms are due by Tuesday, May 27, at 6:00 p.m. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Weber, Fitzgerald, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Braden, Mejia, and the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin. At the working session, counselors discussed outstanding information requests, key budget process reminders, and departmental priorities. Topics included the timeline and process for submitting amendments, and how counselors compare budget asks with policy recommendations. Counselors discussed the options available to them on how to respond to the mayor's proposed budget. Counselors also raised district-specific requests from sidewalk repairs, pest control, and containerization to long-term capital needs like cemetery capacity, the Long Island Bridge, and the Fenway Transportation Action Plan. Additional discussions included restoring public programs, supporting libraries and community centers, and increasing council's central staff capacity. On Monday, May 19, at 2:00 p.m., the committee held a hearing to review the FY26 budget for Human Resources Cabinet and the Office of Returning Citizens. Presented on behalf of the administration were Director of Office of Returning Citizens, Montgomery, and Chief of Human Services, Maso. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Coletta Zapata, Weber, Braden, Mejia, Council President Louis Jen, and the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin. The hearing examined the Office of Returning Citizens' efforts to support individuals re-entering society after incarceration. Counselors discussed the department's expanding programming, including individualized case management, employment pipelines, and housing support. ORC manages 50 housing vouchers in partnership with BHA, placing 28 individuals and referring many more. To address placement barriers, it invested $300,000 in housing support grants and continues advocating for additional resources. The discussion also covered employment strategies and digital equity. ORC builds pipelines across industries like healthcare, food services, and the trades, and partnering with groups such as Brigham and Women's Building Pathways and First Up Alliance. It also worked with Tech Goes Home and the city's digital equity team to offer Chromebooks and digital literacy support for job applications and telehealth access. Counselors praised ORC's $4 million grants to 77 community-based organizations and its efforts to improve access for grassroots nonprofits. Through a quarterly advisory group and a needs assessment, which just assists them partners, the office is identifying gaps in services like family reunification and civic engagement. The conversation highlighted inclusive services for LGBTQ+ individuals, immigrant and youth aged 14s to 21, with a youth reentry grant launch in the summer. Counselors emphasized the need for warm handoff between departments, and ORC confirmed and maintains direct referral pipelines to avoid service gaps. The administration also clarified how they help returning citizens who may be facing discrimination in their search for housing through tools like direct placement assistance, ongoing individual case management, coordination with landlords, collection of character witness statements, and refers to local legal services. Transitional housing and wraparound resources, and overall the commitment to providing housing services designed to meet the unique needs of individuals where they are. Finally, counselors raised questions about a potential wave of returning citizens and the need for long-term planning. ORC is working with community safety teams to track trends and reduce recidivism while continuing to advocate for second chance opportunities and equitable access to housing, employment, and civic life. On Monday, May 19, at 6:00 p.m., the committee held a hearing to review the FY26 budget for Mayor's Office of Housing and Boston Housing Authority. Presented on behalf of the administration were Mayor's Office Housing, Chief Dillon, Mayor's Office of Housing, Deputy Director of Administration and Finance, Wilson, and BHA Administrator, Bach. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Durkin, Braden, Weber, Mejia, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Council President Louis Jen, and we received a letter of absence from the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin. The hearing focused on the city's efforts to produce affordable housing amid rising construction costs, expiring federal and state supports, and deepening housing insecurity for low-income residents. BHA Administrator Bach acknowledged the severity of the recent elevator issues, especially at the Ruth Barkley and Mary Ellen McCormick properties, and outlined new actions, including hiring a new elevator contractor, authorizing over $1 million in emergency modernization work, and implementing a new invoice tracking system to address vendor payment delays. On housing production, counselors pressed the administration on the urgency for increased production, given Boston's low vacancy rate and sustained demand, how much new housing the city should build, and what kind is most needed. While the administration confirmed there's no fixed or ideal number of units to aim for, they emphasized that they are formalizing a housing strategy with clear numerical goals to meet housing production needs. Some counselors expressed concerns about hyper-dense developments displacing family housing. The administration noted that higher density is generally concentrated near transit corridors and underutilized commercial areas, while also reaffirming the need for more three, four, and five-bedroom homes for families. Counselors also noted the importance of funding, the access to council pilot program for residents facing eviction, and how crucial this resource is in meeting the outsized demand for affordable housing. In FY25, the administration highlighted how it was able to provide eviction prevention services for 70 to 90 families with school-aged children through access to council, and requested a commitment to sustaining these efforts in FY26 budget, especially in light of federal cuts to rental assistance. Counselors also called for strong accountability from local universities to relieve housing pressure in neighborhoods. The administration referenced a recently completed study housing report and committed to sharing its findings with the council. Affordable homeownership emerged as a major focal point, the potential loss of state-level Commonwealth builder funding threatens hundreds of planned income-restricted homeownership units. Counselors urged the administration to expand city subsidies, acquisition programs, and down payment assistance tools. The administration pointed to innovations underway in modular housing in Phase 3 of Welcome Home Boston, but acknowledged that without renewed state or outside investment, maintaining the pipeline and new affordable housing remained difficult. On tenant protections, the conversation turned into eviction prevention. On tenant protections, the conversation turned into eviction prevention, the structure of city-issued housing vouchers, and the need to support mixed-status families. Councils expressed concerns about federal threats to voucher funding and asked the administration to explore more project-based voucher models to improve long-term stability. The administration warned that significant federal cuts could eliminate 8,000 BHA vouchers and displace 11,000 children, urging the council to advocate at the federal level. BHA Administrator Bach reported progress in reducing open work orders, dropping nearly 90% since the rollout of digital maintenance systems in October 2024. Councils also raised concerns about recertification delays leading to unnecessary voucher terminations and urged BHA to streamline and humanize this process. The hearing also covered senior intergenerational housing, with calls for more accessible family-sized units to support elders in multi-generational living. BHA shared plans to expand senior housing and emphasized the need for long-term planning to help residents age in place. Councils closed by emphasizing that housing investments must be equitably distributed across all neighborhoods to ensure every Bostonian has access to stable, affordable housing. On Tuesday, May 20th at 10:00 AM, the committee held a hearing to review the FY26 budget for Parks and Recreation. Presented on behalf of the administration were interim Parks and Rec Director Swett, Parks and Rec Deputy Commissioner Brickettine, Parks and Recreation Capital Plan Director Baker Eclipse, Finance and Procurement Director Lee, and Parks Maintenance Director Hincliff, HR and Payroll Director Buford. Councilors in attendance included Councilors Flynn, Weber, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Braden, Murphy, Council President Louis Jen, and the vice chair of the committee, Council Peppin. The department described its capital improvements for FY26 parks, its street plan and program, its cemetery maintenance plan, and how it's doubled its tree-punin operation in 2024. It also detailed its need for climate resiliency in new parks, especially Ryan Playground in Charlestown and Mokley Park in South Boston. After public testimony regarding it, we also discussed the need for a comprehensive needs assessment for Jamaica Pond and its nearby ponds. We also heard from the public and councils about the desire for downtown parks administration. We heard about maintenance challenges even at relatively new parks that come from vandalism, theft, and dogs. The department detailed that there are 260 baseball fields in the city with only seven employees, so maintenance of the fields can be delayed. In terms of recreation, the department spoke of the success of the Mayor's Cup across a series of sports, and detailed collaboration with other departments, and a desire to ease the permanent process for all city parks. For animal care and control, the department described the HVAC work to improve the common space and shared a desire to move into a new space at some point in the future. On Tuesday, May 20th at 2:30 PM, the committee held a hearing to review the FY26 budget for Streets Cabinet, including the Public Works Department and Boston Transportation Department. Presented on behalf of the administration were Chief of Streets Franklin Hodge, BTD Commissioner Gove, Streets Policy and Planning Director Gupta, Deputy Chief of Streets Campbell, Streets Director of Budget and Finance Kochofa, and Waste Reduction Supervisor Roach. Councils in attendance included Councilors Fitzgerald, Durkin, Murphy, Coletta Zapata, Mejia, Flynn, Weber, Braden, Council President Louis Jen, and the vice chair of the committee, Council Peppin. The cabinet spoke about the new trash contract and improved waste reduction operations, which has already resulted in nearly 25% reduction in missed trash calls. The new contract ensures 66 trucks on the road every trash day and includes better reporting and tracking, as well as cameras on the truck. Councils pressed the desire for a resident-facing GPS trash tracker so that residents can better time putting their barrels out for pickup, thus resulting in fewer pests in the city. Commissioner Gove spoke about the increased hiring for BTD enforcement, which has cut its vacancy in half and has only about 40 vacancies, thus resulting in more overnight and weekend parking enforcement. He also said that once they're fully hired, he hopes to fully restart the resident parking program. BTD also detailed a number of new initiatives and changes included how its new parking meters will be multilingual, its new approach to citing speedhumps will be less data-driven, and how Project Greenlight is now installed at more than 100 intersections and has allowed for an average 13.5% reduction in traffic delays. The cabinet also described an increase in snow events from 11 in FY24 to 16 in FY25. They detailed road and sidewalk improvements in 2024, including improvements to more than 12 miles of sidewalks, 1,650 curb ramps, 600 speedhumps, and major projects on Bill Russell Bridge and common highways. Improvements to roads and bridges account for nearly 50% of the cabinet's capital dollars. Discussions also centered on EV chargers, the removal of bike lane flex posts, and the cabinet's history of underspending in its operating budget. Just a reminder, we're bringing this conversation to the community with a hearing on A-Strong and veteran services at the BCYF Grove Hall Senior Center tomorrow at 10:00 AM. That will be followed by a hearing tomorrow night at 5:00 at City Hall on Youth Jobs and Youth Engagement, and next Wednesday we'll have public testimony at City Hall at 6:00 PM. I encourage all my council colleagues to join and help spread the word and share the committee on ways that I recommend that these dockets will remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your diligence in holding these hearings at our pre-council meetings. Central staff and my office were talking about how much we enjoy the rundown to just hear about all of the work that we've done. You know, it goes on pretty long, but it gives us a good summary of the work that we've been doing here in one of our biggest, perhaps our biggest responsibility, to review the mayor's budget. So, thank you for holding those hearings. Thank you for allowing us to speak at those hearings and allowing us time to ask questions. We really appreciate it. These dockets, dockets number 0822 to 0845, will remain in committee. We're now onto motions, orders, and resolutions. A reminder to my colleagues that if you are the lead sponsor, you have three minutes to speak on a docket. If you are a co-sponsor or another council looking to speak on a docket, you have two minutes. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read docket number 1099?
Docket number 1099, Council of Fitzgerald offered the following: Petition for a special law regarding an act relative to the disability pension for Patricia M. Lampron administered by the Boston Retirement Board.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Now you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add, Council Murphy.
Council Murphy is so added. Council Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
And I would like to suspend the rules. I know Council Flynn is not present at the moment, but when we do cleanup at the end of this, maybe I could add him at the end, just as a heads up. Thank you. I'm filing this home rule petition, a petition for a special law regarding an act relative to the disability pension for Patricia M. Lampron administered by the Boston Retirement Board to help Tricia Lampron receive the retirement pension that she deserves. I'm sure you have all heard Tricia Lampron's story, but if you have not, Patricia Lampron is the former principal of the Dr. William Henderson K-12 Inclusion School in Dorchester. On November 3rd, 2021, while in her capacity as principal, Tricia was seriously injured in a violent attack by a student. She was punched in the head and face repeatedly with a closed fist. She was completely knocked out for at least four minutes. From these actions, Principal Lampron suffered a traumatic brain injury, which has affected her speech, mobility, and cognitive ability. She received intensive therapies, including speech, physical therapy, and occupational therapy to address deficits for over two years following the injury. In addition, Principal Lampron suffers from severe post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, and continues to receive counseling and therapy as an outpatient at McLean Hospital. Patricia received workers' compensation from the date of the injury, 11/3/21, until 11/3/24. However, workers' compensation benefits only covered 60% of her salary, leaving her no other choice but to use sick time to cover the remaining 40%, which has impacted her pension and annuity fund considerably. Patricia M. Lampron holds three school administrator licenses, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as her teaching license. However, the severity of Patricia's injuries have prevented her from being able to return to the Boston Public Schools and perform the essential functions of her job in any capacity. It is worth noting that my office has worked directly with our state representative, who will be filing this on their end, as well as the House Counsel up at the State House. They both worked with us on the proper language, and we are sending this up as an amendable home rule petition. This is also important to note. Had Tricia been a police officer, EMS, or any other public safety official, we would not have to file this home rule petition because she would be covered under the new state law that is passed. Because she is a principal, she does not qualify under that law, and principals also do not have a union to help them through this process. I've spoken to the Chair of Government Operations here at the City Council already, and due to calendar restraints, I am seeking to suspend and pass this docket today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council Fitzgerald and Representative Hunt, who I know you've been working closely with Tricia and her family, so thank you for that. So, this to me is a very personal and important home rule petition. Tricia and I were teachers. Our classrooms were next to each other for many years at the Murphy. I had her nephews as students, and then I went over to the Henderson and worked with her when she left the Murphy and became the principal at the Henderson School. So, we have many years of working together. She's a neighbor and a friend. So, it's important that we get this right, and it's long overdue. As many of you know, Patricia dedicated her career to Boston Public Schools, especially to the Dr. Henderson Inclusion School, where she championed inclusion and dignity for all students. And as we're going through this process with the Boston Public Schools, the budget, and this push to have inclusion across the entire school system, it always goes back to the model and the work that is done at the Henderson as the way it should be done for all schools, because it's done right there. And she championed that and took the helm from Dr. William Henderson when he retired and just did an amazing job to make sure that our students have the, you know, inclusion opportunity that every student should have in this city. After suffering a traumatic brain injury in the line of duty, an injury that permanently impacted her speech, mobility, and cognition, Tricia has faced years of recovery with extraordinary strength. This legislation seeks to correct the financial inequity she has endured due to limitations in our current retirement system. I know this is not only the right thing to do, it's long overdue. So, I'm respectfully asking, and thank you, Council Fitzgerald, for asking for a suspended pass and for Chair Coletta Zapata for realizing with the constraints that it's important that we get that up there. So, I am asking my colleagues to support us in suspending and passing this today and do what's right for Tricia and her family.
Thank you, Council Murphy. I know that, Council Fitzgerald, you wanted to add Council Flynn as a third original co-sponsor?
Yeah, please, if we could suspend the rules and add Council Flynn. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Fitzgerald seeks to suspend the rules to add Council Flynn as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing in here, no objections. Council Flynn is added. I probably should have stated before that. Mr. Clerk, for the record, please update the attendance record to reflect that Council Flynn is now present and with us. Council Flynn, if you'd like to speak on this docket at this moment, you may. The chair recognizes Council Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything that I wanted to say other than I support my colleagues. I think this is an issue that this dedicated professional city employee has given her entire career in benefiting the children of the Boston Public School System. I know Patricia. I know her family very well, the Kelly family from South Boston. And whatever we can do to be helpful to this wonderful family that has given so much to our city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Mejia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Councilors Fitzgerald, Murphy, and Flynn see suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1099. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket?
Sorry, sorry. Yep, that's the right docket. Docket number 1099.
Roll call vote on docket number 1099. Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jen.
Yes.
Council Louis Jen, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin. Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1099 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1099 has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1100?
Docket number 1100, Council Worrell offered the following: Petition for a special law, an act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Jose Ortiz.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This home rule petition seeks an age waiver for Jose Ortiz, allowing him to fulfill his lifelong goal of becoming a Boston police officer. Jose is a 40-year-old lifelong Bostonian, born and raised in Roxbury, now living in Dorchester. With deep roots in the community and a strong sense of service, he currently works as an athletic assistant at the BCYF Holland Community Center, where he mentors youth and builds trust through consistency, empathy, and respect. He's known as someone young people can talk to and someone who constantly shows up for them. Jose recently passed the BPD entrance exam and is ready to serve the city as a police officer. His lived experience, emotional intelligence, and connection with the youths makes him an ideal candidate for modern community policing. For those reasons, I respectfully ask the council to suspend and pass this home rule petition today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. Council Worrell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1100. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1100. Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Council Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Council Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jen.
Yes.
Council Louis Jen, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin.
Yes.
Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1100 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1100 has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1101?
Docket number 1101, Councilors Flynn and Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to review the hiring, training, and compliance certification of BPS bus drivers.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, before I begin, I do want to apologize to my colleagues and to you for being late. I had a ribbon-cutting ceremony in my district in Chinatown.
It happens. It's okay. Thank you. You have the floor, Council Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm calling for this hearing today after the tragic passing of a five-year-old boy who was struck by a school bus. This tragedy underscores the urgent need to conduct a thorough review of the hiring and monitoring practices used by TransDev, which is the contract that the Boston Public School System contracts with, the bus company. I think it's important that we find out more information about how this process works in terms of screening, training, certification, supervision. The Boston Public School System provides daily transportation to approximately 22,000 students. Families across the city entrust us with their children's safety. It is our obligation to ensure that we provide the safest ride, transportation to our BPS students, whether going to school or after-school activities such as sports. Throughout this school year, we had issues as it relates to various challenges for the Boston Public School System transportation. I won't highlight those at this time, but I do believe that we need to evaluate and strengthen real-time safety protocols by implementing enhanced measures to ensure that our drivers have the critical services support and training that they need. We have to have a system to report incidents promptly to identify and address any violations before they result in harm. The safety of our Boston Public School children is non-negotiable. As elected officials, we must act swiftly to address this failure that contributed to the tragedy and the taking of an innocent life and to ensure that it never happens again. We must do everything we can to provide the safest possible transportation to all of our BPS families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Together with Counsel Flynn, I'm calling for a hearing to examine the hiring, training, and certification process for Boston Public School bus drivers, following the tragic and possibly preventable death of a five-year-old child in Hyde Park. This driver should not have been behind the wheel. If the reports that we're hearing are true, he had already been involved in collisions that very day and was operating with an expired driving certification. To me, that's a systemic failure, and we have an obligation to dig deeper, not to assign blame, but to prevent this from ever happening again. We entrust our children's safety to this bus system every day. 22,000 children a day are bused around the city to schools, and parents, grandparents, loved ones, teachers are always worried in making sure that their children get home to school safely and back home every day. That trust has been broken, and we must act urgently to rebuild it with clear oversight, transparency, and reform. I'm looking forward to this hearing, hopefully in the Oversight Post-Audit Committee, so we can really talk about systems, maybe breakdowns on those systems, and how we move forward to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, at this, at this time, my, my district, especially Hyde Park, continues to mourn the passing of Lenza Arthur Joseph. And, you know, this past Saturday, Madam President and I, we were at the funeral in Hyde Park, just seeing the hurt that the community is going through. And the entire community, not only the family, cares about this issue, and they're looking for answers. And I'm troubled by the reports, you know, that have been released providing updates on the case, which is why it's so important to have this hearing. But I also just want to be mindful of not politicizing this issue too much and reaching out to the family and connecting with the family to making sure that they are receiving what they need. Because what we've gotten from them is that they need as much help as possible right now. The reason I'm rising is to make sure that our dedicated community, they get the opportunity to get answers, which is why I'll be in attendance at this hearing, making sure that TransDev is providing answers, but also just making sure that my district feels supported. Very curious to know what was the issue behind this, you know, if it was one individual driver, if it's a protocol, or broader failing of TransDev. But I also just want to make sure to say, you know, if there's, something's going to be filed, filed that touches my district, or is it a result of something that happened in my district, please reach out to me. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pepe. And I know that you've carried this issue closely, as have many, including myself, sitting with the family the day that it happened, being with the family every week since then, being with them at the funeral. If there's one funeral you never want to attend, it's one of a five-year-old. Every death that involves a moving vehicle is a preventable death, and so I uplift Lenza Arthur Joseph. I uplift his parents, who are suffering in unimaginable pain that was on full display at the heart-wrenching funeral. And I also want to thank our trauma team here that has been with the family every step of the way, in a culturally competent way, it's a Haitian family in Hyde Park that is grieving right now, deeply grieving, from a death that is preventable. Hyde Park and the Haitian community and our, our city of Boston have seen too many of these, and so I just continue to uplift the Joseph family and pray that no family in the city of Boston has to experience this ever again.
Would anyone else like to add their name to this docket? Or would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 1101, will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1102?
Docket number 1102. Counselor Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to review the management and oversight of the Boston Main Streets programs and the preliminary findings of the Wolf and Company audit.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. My office has been visiting and walking through all the Main Street districts across the city, meeting with directors, talking to business owners, and seeing firsthand the impact these programs offer. So I want to thank those who are doing this work with integrity and passion, but we cannot ignore the recent allegations of mismanagement and financial misconduct within one of our Main Streets organizations. I'm calling for this hearing to allow us to examine the Wolf and Company audit, understand the scope of oversight failures, and make sure city funds are being used appropriately. It's our responsibility to protect the integrity of these programs, especially for the neighborhoods and small businesses that rely on them the most. I believe we owe it the honest, hard-working directors to hold everyone to the same standards. So I'm asking for this hearing to happen and that the representatives from the Mayor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, the Boston Finance Company, hopefully a representative, or the full audit with an overview of the Wolf and Company audit in any relevant Main Street organizations, including Three Square Main Streets. So thank you, Madam Chair, and looking for this hearing. Looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you. The chair recognizes, okay, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Thank you. Docket number 1102 will be referred to the Committee on Post-Audit, Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1103?
Docket number 1103. Counselor Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the community engagement process for installing EV charging stations in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm filing this hearing order today to discuss the community engagement process for installing EV charging stations in Boston, and particularly in District 2. In March, the city held a meeting to discuss proposed locations for EV charging stations throughout my neighborhood in South Boston. At that time, neighbors offered feedback and proposed sites. However, last week, residents on Linden Street, this is a street near, near the high school up towards Dorchester Heights, residents on Linden Street received a flyer at their door indicating a charging station would be built on the street with no public process. Let me say at the outset, this is not about whether anyone supports or opposes electric vehicle charging stations. It's about a process, a thorough community process, that would result in central, reasonable, and appropriate locations. In 2021, I sponsored a hearing with City Councilman Matt O'Malley at that time on the city's plan for adopting EV chargers and electrifying our city's vehicle fleet. At that time, I emphasized using municipal and BPS laws, partnering with state or federal colleagues on suitable areas near recreation facilities, and most of all, partnering with shopping centers. We have, we have one in South Boston down towards Allen Broadway that'd be a perfect location for an EV charging station, especially at nighttime, when there's, when they don't allow parking, and across the street there's a drug, drugstore that has a lot of parking, but it would be a tremendous opportunity to have sites at these locations. I have constituents that own EVs, and I, I know all my colleagues do as well. I understand that the city will look to add charging infrastructure, but I also think it's important to have a thorough, community-driven process with the residents, elected officials, and a sensible approach on appropriate and central locations than simply placing them in front of owners' homes on residential side streets. Moreover, Linden Street neighbors highlighted that the West Broadway municipal lot is a five-minute walk and already contains EV charging stations. They expressed concerns on how an EV charging port would directly take away a parking spot from the majority of the residents and families on Linden, who do not necessarily own an EV. However, some underscored that this would become a year-round de facto parking space used by an EV driver for empty, exacerbating current parking issues. Residents in South Boston noted the potential for a similar dynamic to play out on their street. I also respect people might disagree with me. In 2023, a BTD study found 29,000 active parking permits in 10,000 parking spaces in South Boston. I requested an audit that canceled nearly 8,000 permits, but given South Boston's existing parking crisis, we need to instead review the use of municipal and BPS laws, partnering with our colleagues on, on locations, as I mentioned, nearby gas stations or retail pharmacy chains, grocery chains, shopping centers, other commercial areas, such as the South Bay Shopping Center, which is, I know it's in Counsel Fitzgerald's district, but it's, it's, it's a five-minute walk from my district as well. As I understand, the city allows for installing curbside EV chargers via two ways, one through public ownership-
Counsel Flynn, you are now a minute over time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Weber, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 11-
03.
Okay, 1103, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1104?
Docket number 1104. Counselor Fernandez Anderson offered the following: Resolution to formally support the Roxbury District Improvement Financing TIF to be utilized in District 7.
The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is actually a refile from the previous year, and for the record, I note I've been informed by a lot of my constituents and civic leaders that the media has been asking about, about this, so they could just reference the previous year where my colleagues passed this resolution. I will not belabor the issue of basically District Improvement, Improvement Finance is basically a bill that's already been passed at the state level, and there is a full guide and a packet that you can use for your district, but specific to areas of high development where incremental amounts of tax can be used from a development to specific catchment area that is cited upon. And so, in my district, in the district, we've worked with a nonprofit that was able to gain some funding, and then they went on and did a study on, as to like recommendations on how to implement it, and now we are at a phase of implementation or moving ahead. So I did, I only, it's actually pretty thick, the guide from the state website, so I, I printed one, if I, if you guys want me to pass it around to read it, but please go to mass.gov to get the guide, and you can do this in your district as well. Again, it's a refile, and I'm asking for the rules to be suspended and passed on this resolution for Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Weber, please add the chair. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, the suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1104. All those in favor say aye. All of those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1105?
Docket number 1105. Counselor Santana offered the following: Resolution recognizing June 2025 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Boston.
Okay, um, let's, okay, okay. So, Mr. Clerk, you have read docket number 1105 into the record. Counsel Santana offers the following: Resolution recognizing June 2025 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Boston. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise today with a pride, with pride to offer this resolution, recognizing June 2025 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Boston. Madam President, can I add Counselor Braden as an original co-sponsor?
Counsel Braden is so added. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
And can I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Mejia as an original co-sponsor?
Counsel Santana seeks to suspend the rules, add Counsel, to add Counselor Mejia as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Mejia is so added. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank Counselors Braden and Counselor Mejia, two powerful voices for equity, for joining me as an original, as original co-sponsors. As a Dominican immigrant, as an Afro-Latino, this resolution is deeply personal to me. My family came to Boston seeking opportunity, stability, and safety, and like so many others would now call the city home. I watched my parents work tirelessly to give my siblings and me a chance at a better life. Their courage, their sacrifices, and their relentless hope for the future are what drive me every single day in this role. Boston is a city shaped and strengthened by immigrants. Nearly one in three residents is foreign-born immigrant to our small business owners, students, caretakers, professionals, essential workers, and elected officials. They fuel our economy, enrich our culture, and make Boston a more vibrant, compassionate, and resilient city. This resolution not only honors the contributions of immigrants, but it calls on, on every institution in our city to take meaningful steps to protect and uplift our immigrant communities. Let this month be a celebration, but also a reminder: We must continue to fight for the dignity, rights, and safety of all immigrants in Boston, regardless of status. Thank you, and I urge my colleagues to support this resolution today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Santana for including me in this resolution. As an immigrant from Northern Ireland, I arrived here 30 years ago, next, no, July this year, and this, this place is near and dear to me. It opened its arms and accepted me, and I was able to live a very different life than I would have lived in my home country. Gateway, Boston's been a gateway city for hundreds of years for immigrants from all over the world, and every neighborhood has its own flavor. Hopefully, we can continue to have that ethnic diversity reflected in our neighborhoods. Like, if you want really good Italian food, where do you go? East Boston, maybe North End. I'll not get into trouble by saying anymore. Diversity is our strength, and in this moment, in this moment, we have to stand strong and to protect and support our immigrant community who are under threat at this moment, and I feel that this is the very most essential thing that we can do, recognizing that we're all, most of us are descendants of immigrants, some of us are immigrants ourselves, and that that is what makes Boston Boston. So, thank you, and let's celebrate all the contributions of our immigrant community all across the city, and welcome new ones, new immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Santana for adding me, and I'm proud to co-sponsor this resolution, recognizing June 2025 as Immigrant Heritage Month here in the city of Boston. Boston's story is an immigrant story. Nearly one in three residents in our city is foreign-born, working, raising families, starting businesses, and strengthening our communities, especially during these times when immigrant communities are too often scapegoated, excluded, or under attack. It is important that we not only celebrate our diversity, but defend it. This resolution is a reminder that immigrants are not just part of Boston's past, they are essential to our present and future. Our immigrant neighbors know that here in Boston, we see you, we value you, and we will continue to work to protect you. And I'm really proud that one of the first ordinances that I passed here on the council during COVID was establishing and strengthening our language access department by making sure that whatever vital information comes out in English the same day it comes out in the top 11 languages spoken here in the city of Boston. That is what this moment is really calling us to do, is to fight for and develop program policies, protocols, and procedures that really affirm immigrant communities. Our office also worked to codify the Office of Immigrant Advancement and to make sure that no matter who is in that position of power, that that department will continue to exist despite the political climate that we're in. And lastly, our office was really proud to work alongside Counsel Worrell and Counsel Anderson on establishing the Office of Cultural Affairs, and in that- And so, I rise to say that as an immigrant that came to this country at five years old and had to learn how to speak English and navigate systems that were never really created for us, this work for me and this celebration says that this is our restorative justice moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to say happy Immigrant Heritage Month. Beautiful that this resolution is filed by three members of this body who aren't immigrants themselves in this moment of tremendous fear for so many. We adjusted this morning at the South End Coffee Hour. May we bind together and make sure that we are standing in solidarity in our, with our communities, with what's happening across the city. To so many of my district councils, I know that you are under, your districts and our immigrant communities in your districts are under a tremendous amount of fear and pain. So, may we continue to make space for the joy as we deal with difficult moments. Counselors Santana, Mejia, oh, does anyone else want to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, and Weber. Please add the chair. Counselors Santana, Braden, and Mejia seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 101105. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 1001104 has been adopted. Oh, sorry, 1105 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1106?
Docket number 1106, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offered the following: Resolution in recognition of Boston Emergency Medical Services and in celebration of EMS Week.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know we presented this earlier, but I would like to suspend the rules and formally add Counselor Fitzgerald.
Okay. Counselor Murphy seeks to suspend the rules, add Counselor Fitzgerald as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Fitzgerald is so added. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, as we spoke earlier with Chief Houli and members of the EMS team, the 2025 National EMS Week theme is "We Care for Everyone," which I do think describes our EMS workers perfectly, and it reflects the strength, adaptability, and continued commitment of our EMS professionals who serve in Boston. So, I am asking, after Counselor Flynn has an opportunity to speak on this, that the Boston City Council honors and commends the service, skill, and sacrifice of the men and women of the Boston Emergency Medical Services and hereby recognizes May 19 through May 25th as Boston Emergency Medical Services Week. So, I will be asking suspended pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a week where we recognize and celebrate EMS personnel for their hard work, service, and commitment to public health and safety. Our emergency services personnel, including paramedics, EMTs, work on the front line and witness firsthand accidents, violence, trauma, major incidents. They are dedicated workers, sometimes taking overnight shifts and remaining calm, assuring under highly intense and stressful situations which can take a toll on anyone's mental health. We saw this especially during the COVID-19 pandemic, where a lot of our EMS workers in first responders experienced burnout. As the cost of living increases, it is difficult for many of our EMS personnel to stay in the city. I know residential requirements for our EMS personnel is temporarily suspended for three years. I am also looking forward to this coming Friday. We will have an official groundbreaking ceremony for the EMS station at the Flynn Marine Park in the South Boston waterfront, something that myself, Counselor Flaherty, then Counselor Wu advocated for, for over eight years with the population boom in the area over the last decade. On National EMS Week, I want to honor and say a huge thank you to our EMS personnel for their professionalism and commitment to public health and safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Madam President, I think all was set up on the stage, but I do want to just reiterate and thank you, Counselor Murphy, for allowing me to join. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Chair, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber. Worrall, please add the chair. Counselors Murphy, Flynn, and Fitzgerald seek suspension of the rules and passage and adoption of docket number 1106. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1107?
Docket number 1107, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Resolution commemorating Memorial Day and honoring our Gold Star families and those who made the supreme sacrifice for our country.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I filed this resolution so that the City Council can honor those who made the supreme sacrifice in service to our nation. I'd also like to recognize our Gold Star families and extend our deepest respect to them in sharing the deep pain that all our Gold Star families have sacrificed. Memorial Day, in my opinion, it's probably the most important and significant day of the year. At one time, it was known as Decoration Day. It started as a day for people to decorate the graves of the war dead with flowers after the Civil War. Decoration Day continued to be observed on the local level, and in 1968, Congress passed the Uniform Monday Holiday Act, which established Memorial Day. And the official name was changed in 1971. Memorial Day, the country pays respect to more than 1.1 million American military personnel who made the supreme sacrifice for this country while serving in uniform, as I mentioned, as well as our Gold Star families. This is a solemn day. In Boston this weekend, there will be over 37,000 flags placed in the Boston Common by the Massachusetts Military Heroes Fund at home base to honor the service members who gave their life defending our nation. It is a beautiful tribute to our fallen heroes. I know our city councilors and the mayor will be attending many events over the next several days as well. Let's recognize our fallen heroes, and may we never forget their bravery, sacrifice, and service. I'd also like to highlight how painful it is for these Gold Star families for not seeing their loved one grow up and have a family of their own. That family, that Gold Star family, really is what this nation is all about. It's about the incredible sacrifices they have made so that we're able to be here today and to celebrate so many freedoms that we have. But we recognize our Gold Star families for the pain in the very difficult times that they've had without their loved one, whether it was a son or a daughter or a spouse. That pain never leaves them. On Memorial Day, this nation shares that pain with them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for filing this. When I was coming back to City Hall earlier, I stopped by the flag placing that has already started on Public Garden, and the 37,000 flags that are placed to remember each of the Massachusetts service members who have died for our freedom. So, it's important to remember those and their families, and also just want to uplift our Commissioner Santiago for Veteran and Family Services, who always reminds people during this week leading up to Memorial Day that it's not a day just for cookouts. If we actually are remembering the holiday for what it is supposed to be remembered for, it's to remember those who have died for our freedom. So, I look forward to being alongside Commissioner Santiago and many of my colleagues and veteran families over the next several days to remember those who died in war and in service for our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counselor Flynn, for commemorating such an important day. I know I'll be with the Mission Hill Post on Monday, and it's so important that we, as a city council, stand up and thank those who have done everything to make sure that we can live in a free and fair society. So, it's more important than ever. So, thank you so much, Counselor Flynn, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I want to thank Counselor Flynn for serving and his service and for filing this. Many of my colleagues have already alluded to this, but this Monday, we pay direct honor to those who made the ultimate sacrifice on Monday across the city. Counselor Durkin mentioned the Mission Hill Post. There will also be, and I have this in announcements, so in announcements, I will go into further detail about the memorials that I know of that are happening this coming Monday. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Worrall. Please add the chair. And Counselor Weber. Okay, sorry, I missed you, Counselor Weber. Okay. Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1107. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. Docket 1107 has been adopted. We are now on to personnel orders, but before we do that, would anyone like to add their name to a docket or put forward a motion to reconsider a vote when they were not in chambers? The Chair recognizes Counsel Rorrell.
Docket number 1104 and 1105.
Are there docket you'd like to add your name to?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, Counsel Rorrell would like to add his name to dockets number 1104 and 1105. You have those? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we are now on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Personnel orders, docket number 1108, Counsel Louie Zin for Counsel Coletta, and personnel order, docket number 1109, Counsel Louie Zin for Counsel Murphy.
Thank you. The Chair moves for passage of dockets number 1108 and 1109. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. I believe we have some that have been formed to the clerk from Counselors Weber and Counsel Fitzgerald. Counselor Santana, I also see your light on. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to pull docket number 1052 from the top of page 11, the green sheets from the Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development Committee.
1052? Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you have that before you?
Yes.
Could you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, docket number 1052, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $15,000 in the form of a grant for the BTHC program awarded by the donor group to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund free tax preparation and filing services to low and moderate income Boston residents.
Thank you. Absent objection? The motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Docket number 1052 is assigned to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development at the last council meeting. It is a grant in the amount of $15,000 awarded by a donor group to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. It's pretty straightforward. It would be used to fund free tax preparation and filing services for low to moderate income Boston residents. We held a hearing in April with, which detailed how the Boston Tax Help Coalition manages 30 tax sites throughout Boston, the greater Boston region, and has provided free training for more than 300 volunteers for them to earn IRS certification to file tax returns accurately. Groups that partner include ABCD, Urban Edge, the Boston Public Library, and the Massachusetts Commission for the Blind and Deaf. The body has already voted to approve two grants for the Boston Tax Help Coalition in the amount of $480,000. So, I'm just bringing this $15,000 grant and hoping we can vote to accept it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counselor Weber seeks passage of docket number 1052. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Counsel Fitzgerald, did you also? Okay. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to pull dockets 0101, 0460, and 0649 from page 15 of the green sheets.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do you have those dockets before you? Mr. Clerk, could you please read those dockets into the record?
From the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery, docket number 10, excuse me, docket number 0101, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Elsie Tavares as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 26, 2026. Docket number 0460, message in order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Dr. Gualli Valdez as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 15, 2028. And docket number 0649, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Stanley McLaren as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring January 15, 2028.
Thank you. Absent objection? The motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the dockets are properly before the body. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, my colleagues, both Dr. Elsie Tavares and Dr. Gualli Valdez are reappointments to the board. I believe on Dr. Elsie's, it just said an appointment, but those are both reappointed, and Stanley McLaren would be a new appointment to the board. Stan is the chief executive officer of the Boston Healthcare for the Homeless Program. Stan is, most recently, served as the president of Carney Hospital. But before Carney Hospital, Stan was the CEO of Harvard Street Neighborhood Health Center. Earlier in his career, McLaren was a member of the leadership team at a school serving under-resourced communities in Boston. He's also worked at the Boston Public Health Commission, where he founded a program helping fathers become fully involved with their families and their community. Personally, I serve on the Dorchester Working Group for the Carney Hospital with both Dr. Valdez and Stan McLaren. I'm hoping to pass these three appointments so that the Boston Public Health Commission Board of Health can have a quorum at their June meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Because these are reappointments, the docket only says appointments, same issue we had about a week or two ago, so we need to be in a brief recess so we can correct the docket so it says reappointment.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in a brief five-ten minute recess. We are in a brief five-ten minute recess. For the next green sheets poll, and I believe Council Santana has a green sheets poll, so Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I would like to pull docket number 1051 for the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. I believe it's on page 14 of the green sheets.
Mr. Clerk, do you have that docket before you?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read that docket into the record?
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 1051, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $23,860 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 25 firefighter safety equipment grant, round two, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the procurement of necessary equipment, firefighter personnel, personal protective and safety equipment to comply with the National Fire Protection Association and occupational safety and health administration standards.
Thank you. Absent objection? The motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on all grants administered by the Boston Fire Department on Friday, April 25, 2025. We're joined by my colleagues, Council President Louie Jean and Councilor Ed Flynn. We also received letters of absence from Council Worrell, Council Weber, and Council Pepe. The Committee heard testimony on behalf of BPD, BFD, and administration from Deputy Chief Rodney Marshall, Deputy Chief Patrick Ellis, Deputy Commissioner Kevin Coyne, Julie Devon, Shawna Lynch, Fire Marshal Colin Kelly, District Chief John McDonald, District Chief Scott Malone, Captain Kenneth Hayes, and Deputy Chief Joseph Shea. As we heard at the hearing, the small grant of $24,000 is for a second round of firefighter safety equipment grant program in state fiscal year 2025. This grant program from the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services is intended to enhance firefighter safety by providing fire departments with the necessary personnel, protective, and safety equipment to comply with National Fire Protection Association and the occupational safety and health administration standards. This funding will be used specifically to allow the department to procure replacements of handheld thermal imagers which have been taken out of service due to failure or safety concerns for use by chiefs assigned to the field. For the safety of our Boston firefighters, as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the Committee to full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the council will be that docket number 1051 ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
And thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to Councilor Santana for bringing this forward, but for an important meeting and discussion that he chaired, and we had an opportunity to ask unlimited questions, really, to the Boston Fire Department officials that were here, and that's what we talked about, is safety for firefighters and their families. We talked about health and wellness programs, but it was very informative, educational, and including to the public. I heard a lot of great feedback from the public about how we take this issue very seriously here in the City Council. That's exactly what our job is, and want to acknowledge and say thank you to Council Santana for the very productive and professional hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay. Counselor Santana, the docket, I know that you said it, okay. Counselor Santana seeks passage of docket number 1051. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. We are back to the green sheets polls from Counsel Fitzgerald. Everyone should have before them the updated language that says reappointment. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes, we've corrected for Dr. Elsie Tavares to be written in a new draft as reappointment, and so we'd like to, a vote to pass on the new draft. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Fitzgerald seeks for passage of all these three dockets. We will first take a vote on docket number 0460. Would anyone like to speak on any of these matters? I think, I know personally Dr. Valdez and Stanley McLaren and think that they work, that they do great, so happy to see their appointments to the BPHC Board. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay. Counsel Fitzgerald seeks for passage of docket number 0460. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Counsel Fitzgerald seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0649. All those in favor say aye. Aye. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Counsel Fitzgerald seeks passage of docket number 010 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Okay. Would anyone else like to pull anything from the green sheets? Okay, we are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are 10 late file matters. Seven of those are personnel orders. We will take a vote to add the late file personnel orders onto the record. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These personnel orders have been added to the record. Mr. Clerk, could you please read them into the record?
First personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Mejia. Second personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Mejia. Third personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Pepe. Fourth personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Pepe. Fifth personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Pepe. Sixth personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Durkin. And seventh personnel order, Council Louie Jean for Council Durkin.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add these personnel files, personnel orders onto the, to pass these personnel orders. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These personnel file, these personnel orders have been passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the two late file matters from the administration onto the record?
First late file matter from the Office of the Mayor. I hereby transmit for your approval an order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation valued at $397, representing the cost of an intersex-inclusive progressive pride flag, 10 by 15, to the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement donated by the Boston Foundation Equality Fund. And second late file by the Mayor, I hereby transmit for your approval an order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an in-kind donation valued at $108.55, representing the cost of tabling at the Boston Pride for the People Pride Festival to the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement by Boston Pride for the People.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add these late file matters, these two late file matters onto the record. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These two late file matters have passed, have been added to the record. I am asking my colleagues, these are such nominal amounts, and in celebration of pride that's coming up, that we suspend and pass these so that our Office of LGBTQ+ Advancement can move forward and accept these in kinds and be prepared for the celebrations and events to come. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? All those in favor of passing these two late file matters, say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These two matters have passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the last late file matter into the record?
Order of Council Erin Murphy, emergency hearing ordering, emergency hearing order regarding traffic safety at the intersection of Dorchester Avenue, Rose Clair Street, and Mount Vernon Street.
Thank you. We'll take a vote to add this late file matter onto the record. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This matter is added to the record. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to add Counselor Fitzgerald.
Counsel Fitzgerald is so added.
I would like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Flynn, please.
Counsel Murphy seeks to suspend the rules, add Counsel Flynn as a third original code sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Flynn is so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I rise to call for an emergency hearing regarding a dangerous intersection in Dorchester, where Dorchester Avenue meets Rose Clair and Mount Vernon Streets. This corner sits at the heart of a vibrant neighborhood, surrounded by schools, initially Boston Collegiate Charter School, small businesses, and homes. Yet despite the heavy foot traffic in vehicles, there is no traffic lights and no rail protections for pedestrians. What makes this call to action especially powerful is that it was sparked by a student, Caroline Richardson, a former student of mine, who raised her voice through a petition that outlines exactly what's at stake: people being hit by cars, flipped vehicles, and students unable to return to school due to injuries sustained right at this intersection. These are all things that have happened recently at this intersection. Caroline's petition reminds us that safety improvements aren't abstract policy. They're about protecting lives, especially the lives of our young people who are bravely asking us to do better. This hearing is an opportunity to listen directly to them, to the students, to the residents and business owners, and to work with our transportation officials to make this intersection safer now, not later. So, I thank my colleagues for allowing this to come through as an emergency late file. We don't have a meeting next week, and I did speak with Caroline's family just about bringing this forward to make sure that we uplift the importance of this. So, just a few highlights on the incidents that have happened and what has brought Caroline and students at the collegiate school to form this petition, to get attention to this matter. Despite the presence of crosswalks, the intersection currently lacks critical safety infrastructure such as traffic lights and crossing guards, which has led to increasingly dangerous conditions for pedestrians. Students from the community, including Caroline, have raised urgent concerns through this petition for immediate action to address these unsafe conditions, citing personal accounts of pedestrian industries and unsafe vehicle speeds. The petition that she wrote notes that the intersection experiences a constant and fast-moving flow of vehicles, including reports of serious crashes and near misses, and highlights the voices of residents and business owners who have witnessed these actions daily. Caroline's petition references the City of Boston's own Safety Surge Initiative, which aims to prioritize intersections near parks, schools, and community centers for safety improvements, criteria that clearly apply to this location. This hearing is being filed as an emergency because the situation demands immediate attention to prevent further injury or potential loss of life, and to affirm that when young people raise their voices to advocate for community safety, their local government listens and responds. So, I'm looking forward to this hearing and the appropriate committees to come in front of us and to hear from the students directly. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. While the technicalities of the intersection, Counsel Murphy explained very well, and I do agree, there are a lot of instances at this. I think the great story here is the proactiveness of our youth in speaking for themselves and their own safety, and so we always want to be supportive of that. But yes, the intersection itself does need some redesigning in a way, so happy to support, and thank you, Counsel Murphy, for adding me.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you.
Now, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counsel Murphy for routing me. This is one of the most dangerous intersections in the city, Edward Everett Square, but also just down the road a little bit is Andrew Square. But this school sits kind of in the middle, more towards, obviously, Edward Everett Square. Many of my constituents in South Boston go to this wonderful school as well. I also think we need to have strict enforcement of the current traffic laws by Boston police. I think that's a critical aspect of this. I also advocated for, with Counsel Baker, a long time ago, to reduce the speed limit, which we're able to reduce, but I still think 25 miles an hour is excessive in the City of Boston. I would, I would think 20 miles an hour really should be the speed limit. I think that's, even then, that's very fast going through neighborhoods of Boston, 20 miles an hour. But I think there's an opportunity for us to listen to these young students. I want to say thank you to Caroline for the important work she is doing in getting her fellow students involved in this critical issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin, you have the floor. Now, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. This is all really, really important, and it just shows you sort of the connection between the most critical and safety issue intersections that are, that happen and that exist in our city, and the federal safety grants that we do work to pass in this. I did attempt to pass the Safe Streets for All Grant Program for $9 million a couple of months ago. I know that this part of Dorchester Avenue is not listed, but there was a part of DOTAv that was part of that intersection and that hearing, and we will be having a hearing June 18th on the $9 million for the Safe Streets for All Grant Program. So, I just want to make sure that it sounds like these students are just incredible and trying to work to make their streets safer, but I have attempted to pass safety grants with urgency and get our city working and planning for grants, and when I've tried to pass them, there has been contention. So, I just want to make sure that as we're moving with urgency, as we're doing emergency hearing orders, we're also working to pass federal money that is sitting in our bank account and cannot be spent right now. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Durkin, for your urgency and your diligence on these grants and these issues. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Mejia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the consent agenda has been adopted. We are now moving on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. I want some, there are a few birthday shout-outs, so shout-outs to an intern in Counselor Santana's office, Joaquim Rizal Lumbos, and Counselor Murphy's office, Caroline Cullen O'Neil. To my sister whose birthday is today, Kenthea, who I love dearly and is the best of the four of us, happy birthday, sis. And I also wanted to extend a congratulations to Jaieli, who is graduating with her master's in public administration from UMass, so congratulations, Jaieli. We are proud of you. As I stated as well, there are Memorial Day commemorations happening. This Monday, early in the morning, there are memorials in High Park and in West Roxbury, at the High Park Post, and in West Roxbury at Hittseminy Gardens, and then there were an Evergreen in Brighton around eleven, and commemoration at the Puerto Rican Monument in the South End, and I believe there may be others happening in, at Cedar Grove and others around the city. But look forward to being in community with everyone to uplift and remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice, also want to uplift the work of Killed in Action and of Officer Conley and all the work that he does to make sure that no one goes unremembered in the city of Boston. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just congratulate some of my teammates. I wanted to uplift JD Moore, Beatrix Knight, Induce Bernard, all who are part of my policy team, and all who have graduated from college, Induce with her master's. So I just want to say thank you to my entire team for how hard you work and how deeply committed you are to the mission of the work that we do and doing so while juggling your degrees. So I just want to give you all a shout-out and congratulate you for your hard work. And while I'm up, I also wanted to acknowledge and give a shout-out to my other teammate, Julisa, who now is Julisa Gonzalez. She was recently married, and so just wanted to uplift her in this congratulatory, you know, moment that we're having right now. And I also just wanted to invite all of my colleagues. Sunday, not everyone's going to be going out to the Hamptons or wherever it is that we, people go to, I don't know, maybe here in Boston to the Cape, I don't know. But on the twenty-fifth, we are going to be hosting a multicultural fair. We're bringing together people from across the countries and the world for a day of fashion, food, and we're also, I just also wanted to thank all of our city council staff members who donated to our clothing boutique. We got tons of clothes. As you know, we take all the clothes that we receive and we reach, we partner up with a thrift store and we treat the clothes and then we create an opportunity to open it up as a boutique so families can shop for free and pick up pieces that were donated in a way that they can do so with dignity. So that's happening Sunday from twelve to five at the Bruce Bowen Building in Counselor Anderson's district, because you know, I do everything in her district. And so hopefully you all will stop by and celebrate. I know Counselor Worrell participated in our last clothing boutique initiative that we hosted, so hope to see my colleagues there. And those who are tuning in, stop by, grab something to eat, support some of our local vendors, and more importantly, spread the word so that those who are looking for clothes can get some for free. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to everyone in your office, Counselor Mejia. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin.
Thank you so much. This weekend, I'll be wearing a very important hat, which is Counselor of the Bride and Groom. You all may remember Jake Werner, who was a member of my team and a member of former Counselor Kenzie Box's team. Him and his beautiful future bride, Haley Forbes, are getting married this weekend in Salem, and so I'm excited to join their wedding festivities, but just wanted to give them a shout-out. I know it'll mean a lot to him as a council alum, and he's going to be headed to law school in the fall, so he's doing very well and very excited for our city council alum who is getting married this weekend, also resident of District Eight and Audubon Circle, so very, very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations abound. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Tonight at six o'clock at the Lauren Greenough House, there'll be a celebration of Jerry Wright. He's ninety years old and many people in Jamaica Plain know him as Frederick Law Olmsted. He dresses up as Frederick Law Olmsted and hangs out near the pond in the Emerald Necklace. He's a great advocate for the parks and for Friends of Jamaica Pond, so please join me at the Lauren Greenough House at six. And then on Saturday, on the twenty-fourth, the North American Indian Center of Boston is from twelve to four, is hosting a garden party for native youth. There'll be activities, music, art, and they'll be working on, you know, sort of planting stuff, helping people plant stuff for the summer and the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. The chair recognizes Counselor Collette Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I just want to wish my husband a happy first wedding anniversary. Thank you.
Congratulations abound. Congratulations, Counselor Collette Zapata, and to Sebastian as well. Okay, we are now moving on to memorials. If you would like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of anyone, now is the time to turn your light on so that you can speak on behalf. I'd just like to uplift into this chambers, and I know Counselor Weber does as well, George Went, best known for his role as Norm Peterson on the beloved Boston set sitcom Cheers. He passed away yesterday at the age of seventy-six. Though a Chicago native, we have a few of those, Went became an honorary Bostonian through his iconic portrayal of the bar's most loyal patron, helping cement Cheers and its eleven years and two hundred and seventy-five episodes. Six years he was nominated for an Emmy in that role as a cultural touchstone of this city. So his character's warmth, wit, and unwavering presence at the bar made him a symbol and pride of Boston's spirit. So I raise a figurative glass to George Went and cheers him in his, in his passage and remember and uplift his family in this time as well. Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of anyone who has passed? Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of myself and the entire Boston City Council, George Went. On behalf of Counselor Braden, Michael Whitla. And on behalf of the entire Boston City Council, we remember and honor the brave men and women who gave their lives and service to our country. Their sacrifice is the foundation of the freedoms we cherish. May we carry their memory with us always and may we remember them at this moment, a moment of silence. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We're still in May, so happy Jewish American Heritage Month, happy Asian Heritage Month, happy AAPI Heritage Month. The council is scheduled to meet again in the INLO chamber on Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-five at twelve noon. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, and the clerk in the clerk's office, and the council stenographer, thank you, Ellen. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, the council is adjourned.